Hi. So I think, thank you to everyone who's joining us via Zoom and those of us in the room. I think it's time to call this meeting to order. It is a special meeting of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Commission on March 21st, 2022, scheduled for 6:30 PM, but it's actually starting at 6:45 PM. I guess we'll do a roll call, which I know we have Erica and Robin Campbell and Stuart Cobb and Troy Spazano. Me. See, we got Samantha Hills on Zoom and Tom Smith on Zoom. And Jenny. Oh, and Jenny, yeah, Jenny or Mike Demano is going to try. Do you think he'll be here in person or on Zoom?
Zoom.
Okay, so I'll keep an eye out for him. Otherwise, one, two, three, other store. Oh, yes, Stuart Fisher is not going to be able to join us today. Oh, Donna. Okay, we do have a forum, so we can proceed with the meeting. The first item on the agenda is a presentation of the ARPA Commission Funding Request Approval Process, and I'm just going to go through that quickly. It basically is a summary of what we have been grappling with and figuring out how exactly this process is going to work. And so for people who haven't been with us through this whole process, here's the summary. First of all, we'll start with the fact that the town received ARPA funds from the federal government in two different tranches. Each one has $867,727.11. The first tranche was available to the town starting July 1st, and we expect the next one to be available this coming. So then, this commission was as a way to streamline the process of determining how to disperse these funds. And the first thing we tried to do was solicit fund submissions. So we had some general ideas of things that people would be submitting for, and we wanted to formalize it. So we created an online submission process where people have put in, filled out project request forms, and so far, we have 25 submissions with equalling $1,307,259.30 in requests. And we expect there to be more than that. We've also been advertising that people, and it's not just all people, but that people who are department heads or budget writers or other interested parties who would be in a position to be, to manage these funds. Let's make sure everybody knows that it's available, that they should be submitting now. So we have used emails, e-blasts, Facebook, all the usual ways, and we, of course, discuss it at multiple meetings. So hopefully, the word is out. We have heard that people are working on different things, and like I said, we have 25 submissions so far. Four of these requests were already funded through a town meeting in August, and that was $123,500 worth of appropriation, which leaves $744,227.11 remaining of the first tranche, which is available to be appropriated. Now, the town has those funds. So the four-step process is that the board will formally receive the submission. Twelve have been received so far. So there's the person actually submitting, and then there's the board sitting down, seeing the submission and saying, okay, it's formally in our system and has a number. And then, the next step is, depending on the timing, they may be on the next ARPA Commission meeting to be heard. And when that happens, the board can decide that it should go to public hearing next, or the worker decides to table it, or just decline to proceed with it. There may be some other things they could decide that we haven't imagined yet, but that's sort of the next step is the board hears it, decides, yeah, this should go to public hearing, which brings us to public hearing, which is where we're at right now, which is a chance for the public to hear more about it and weigh in on merits of the request and just give feedback in general to the board about whether they support it or don't support it, or whatever the case may be. And then, the next step would be action, and that's where the board decides whether or not to fund the project or not. I think the board could change the amounts if there's more information available, or put conditions on it, or do any other actions like decline it or those types of whatever. While we get there, we haven't done that yet. That is actually on the agenda for after the public hearing part of this meeting would be the first time that we've actually gone to that step, which our town attorney has assured us is how we should proceed. And then, once the project is funded, it'll follow the usual procurement process, meaning getting bids, the selectmen signing contracts, all of those things that happen after normal projects are appropriated. So that is our basic process boiled down into five simple steps. And I guess with that, if anyone, does anyone have any questions or anything to add to what I? Because now it's to the public hearing part of this. We're all good? Okay. All right, so now we're going to move on to the public hearing. So what we're going to be hearing about here are funding request submissions for public input for ARPA number three, which is $100,000 for the purchase of a second ambulance for Willington Fire Department One, ARPA number five, $137,000 for SCBA air packs for Willington Hill Fire Department, ARPA six, which is $69,000 for a generator for Department of Public Works, ARPA seven, $20,000 for air conditioning for the HMS Hall Memorial School Band Room for the Board of Education, ARPA fifteen, $34,379 for premium pay for human services staff, and that's for the Willington Human Services Department. ARPA sixteen, $235,000 for radios for the fire department's use, and that's a joint submission from both Willington Hill Fire Department and Fire Department Number One. ARPA number four, $38,000 for radios for public works' use. And ARPA fourteen, $300,000 for small business and nonprofit assistance program. And with that, I think we should probably go one by one and just start with the very first one. And if the requesters are here, they can give a short presentation, and then we can hear comments and field questions. So the first one is ARPA three, $100,000 for a purchase of a second ambulance. Here's Alex.
Good evening. This project's been talked about since October, November, back in 14. First electing the chairman of the Board of Finance, Ben to the Board of Finance, and then when ARPA Commission was formed, it was decided that this would be the route to go with it. This is to try to alleviate some of the wear and tear on our current ambulance, our current ambulance, the 2015. It is in the process, or it's in this year's budget cycle to be replaced. For what we're getting from multiple vendors is it could be up to 18 to 24 months to replace, depending on what manufacturer you're doing. We've heard that from two different manufacturers. This will help take the wear and tear off of the current truck, also provide when that truck is out of service, we're not without any. Currently, if our ambulance is out of service, we have to rely on our mutual aid partners or trying to borrow from another community, which increases our liability. So this is solely so that we can continue doing the 911 transport with it.
Is there anyone who has any questions or any comments about this project? William Foreman, I see your hand raised, and Erica's unmuting you. Oh, it's Joan. You're muted.
Okay, thought it was muted. Okay, about the new ambulance? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's the project that we really, really need, and I'm so happy to see it on the list. So I want to make sure I say thank you, and yeah, I'm going to support that one 100%. Okay, thanks a lot.
Anyone else? Matt Clark, I see you raising your hand.
Matthew Clark, 42 Burt Latham Road, Wellington, Connecticut. I was wondering if the $100,000 that you're contemplating, is that? There was a conversation in the last Board of Finance meeting where there was comments made that there might be less expensive options available. Does this $100,000 reflect the possibility of less expensive options? Have they done any more work on pricing this since that last Board of Finance meeting?
So since the last Board of Finance meeting, we have not had a chance to reach out to any other vendors. We did, the $300,000 was from two different vendors that we'd already gotten estimate front. We can't go out to bid. That's, $300,000 is for a new ambulance. This is strictly for a used ambulance to operate as a second. This is so that when our truck is out of service, this can be used to lighten the load on our current truck to, for the wear and tear. Currently, we've had extraordinarily high repair costs on this truck. Just to try to repair some of that.
Oh. Not, you're muted again.
Yeah, I was just, if possible, I think we should probably table this and see whether or not there are less expensive options open. There was, you know, comments made that there might be, you know, used ambulances available for backup for our town that are a little less expensive than $100,000 that's before the ARPA committee. Thank you.
Can I ask or make a comment? So I recall this submission before ARPA is not the new ambulance that's in the CIP before the Board of Finance. This is an additional product, so it has nothing to do with the discussion happening at Board of Finance about a new ambulance. You were asking us for something completely different and additional.
Correct.
Anyone else on Zoom or in the room with a question or comment about the second ambulance?
I do, Christina. So that brought up a question for me because I thought that we had discussed at a previous meeting here about the $100,000, and that would include some, like, you know, purchase and then kind of like upgrading it, you know, to make it ready for use. But would that mean, does that usurp then the idea of a new ambulance that's before a different committee, or are we ultimately looking to get two in the town now? Do you see what I'm saying? Does that, does this replace the request for a new ambulance? No, so then our town would have, oh, okay, so, okay, so how many? Right now, we just have the one, and I know, I know that there's, and I remember, we talked about there being issues when that one was out of commission and, you know, not having a second, but wouldn't the new one that is being proposed serve as, you know, in that function?
So it would be a used truck solely to take a little bit of the load off of our current ambulance that tells replaced, and then use it when ours is out of service maintenance, stuff like that? So that we're not without any.
I do understand that, but what I'm saying is if we are getting a new ambulance, wouldn't that also serve that same purpose to take the load off of the current ambulance?
We would get rid of the truck that we currently have. The truck that we currently have.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for clarifying.
Last question, Alex. We've talked about with other departments and public works and keeping some of those as fair. The reason you wouldn't, if I understand correctly, the reason you wouldn't keep them there when we can get a new one is because of the significant issues you had with it?
Correct, the amount of mechanical issues. There is a possibility, and this is for CIP or for Finance, that we may remount that truck, just a box, because there's nothing physically wrong with that box that's on it from, and put that on a new chassis to save money, but we don't know those prices. And so we have, we can't even go out to, or folks, because we don't want to talk to those until.
So we have funding.
Until we have funding security.
I just wanted to be trying to understand that. Thank you.
Nice, I'm trying to, I want to address this first item. Because I have a concern having a panel session with our state representative and being sure she talked about possibly these parts of funds. One of the things she stressed was not select items that are expensive, it should be one time spend insurance, and she shares examples in her sheets. It seems to me, almost I was understanding the chief, that we're going from our one ambulance to two ambulances. That will become at some point, we won't be replacing one ambulance for our budget, we'll be replacing two ambulances in our budget. That seems like a long-term concern, that while it may be an attractive situation now, I'm actually issue for the town.
So the hope is, and what we've seen with other communities and talking to other towns, with two trucks, you're able to stretch the span of the truck out. So where we're getting five to six years, we can hopefully, the plan is to get 10 to 11 out of the truck. We would still replace on our current cycle. You would keep two trucks, it's just you're replacing it double, that one truck, double what you'd want. So you're not, you're not changing your current budget or what your replacement cycle is, you're just changing your replacement of which vehicle. So you're stretching the life expectancy of one truck out compared to just operating.
Alex, had we not had ARPA funds?
Yep.
Is this something that you think you would have approached from a budget perspective?
Yes.
Is it something you're planning to go forward?
So we had brought this to Board of Finance in this November or December. I know we had met with yourself and Chairman McCoo, I think it was October or November, regarding this because of the maintenance issue with our. So this was going to Board Finance, and we've talked about it with Board Finance before the ARPA Commission was formed. And then, once ARPA Commission was formed, it was decided that this would be a better place for that, rather than off the board.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I just wanted to address, I didn't hear who brought up that question about an ongoing expense. We had talked about that at the last meeting, and I brought up, I think we addressed it, and I had thought about a similar expense. The only expense, if the plan works as proposed, although this other ambulance has kind of thrown me for a loop because I didn't know about that, because obviously, if you have a brand-new one, having an older one that needs repairs, then we are supplementing that, making it last longer. But a brand-new one, I mean, I understand that, you know, you may increase longevity by having the second one, but it changes the dynamic a little bit. But then, the only expense that would be ongoing, if the plan works as expected, where the operating costs and the maintenance costs, or excuse me, the maintenance costs would be halved, you know, for each individual ambulance, so totaling the same in the budget, the insurance is the only thing that would go up regardless. We just, we did discuss that, I believe, if somebody wanted to confirm that. So that would be an ongoing expense, and I do think that that is a valid concern for every one of the things that has gone on. And I know, Christina, that you had said that the lawyer has approved or said, yes, we're allowed to do the expenses, but does that, they specifically address the ongoing expenses that would come into, specifically address ARPA being allowed to, like, say, yeah, we can fund this? But how is it that we're also, they specifically addressed us saying, yeah, now we're adding this into the budget that's an ongoing expense rather than a one-time expense? They address that?
Yeah, no, the spirit of the last communication we received, the attorney was at the Board of Finance meeting, actually, on Thursday, or more. It was really more about the legality of this commission appropriating something going outside the normal. But otherwise, all we have is the final rule to go by, and that's sort of what we're here to do, is make sure that these expenditures are in line with that. So, and I don't know that there's anyone out there who would be able to tell us, oh, yeah, that one's okay, or that one's not okay. I think we have to hope, you know, do our due diligence and hope that we're making the right decisions. And I think I brought up in our last meeting, those are some, with any of these projects, anything that has an ongoing expense, and all of them would have some sort of maintenance expense if we buy new radios, there's maintenance replacing them, we're kind of committing to replace those radios down the road as well. So there's always the possibility, Samantha, that in a budget process, whoever those budget-making individuals are down the road wouldn't support something and cut it from a budget. So that's when they're, when we were given these funds and then passed when we receive stimulus funds, they kind of warn you against increasing expenses. So for instance, in a school, it's easy to explain in a school, you suddenly come into some funding and you go out and hire three more teachers, but when that money is gone, can your budget absorb continuing with three new teachers, right? And so do you do that? And so it's up to us to weigh what the spirit of the money was, right? COVID-related expenses, a pandemic-related expense, and whether or not we think we can afford that, and that's the best thing for our town. So that's just one more thing I think we need to weigh in on when we're approving more or not. Mike McCoo.
Mike McCoo, Clover Springs Drive. I'm also chairman of the Board of Finance. I'd like to speak to the ambulance thing. I think, being a fire guy myself, ambulance service is really critical, and having a decent, having decent equipment is really critical. And then also, in my role as chairman of the Board of Finance, figuring out the best way to use the money that we are all putting into the pot to do this. There was a suggestion made, and I don't know if this board will pick it up or find it favorable or not, but there was a suggestion made at the Board of Finance meeting the other night, that instead of spending $100,000 worth of ARPA money to buy a second ambulance, and coming up soon, spending $300,000 to buy a new ambulance, and then having two ambulances, that perhaps, and I know because I was part of this suggestion, perhaps a more prudent thing would be if this board considered upping the ARPA funding to $200,000, they could order a brand-new ambulance. And the pricing that I estimated on that is based on the fact that the University of Connecticut new ambulance a couple of weeks ago for $175,000. And then, there possibly could even be the value of the current ambulance for some trade-in, so could even push the budget over $200,000. That would get the order in sooner. I'm not sure it would help the chief with his concerns with the reliability of the current ambulance, because he would have to wait for the order to come in. But if we were to look at the basic math on that, $200,000 worth of ARPA money would be off-budget for this year's taxation. It certainly takes money from other projects in town, and it is taxpayer money in the long run, but it would take it off of taxation, or it would not be on taxation. And it would take the $300,000 ambulance out of the CIP plan, and that would be saving, whether it's from Fund 17 or whether it's something else Fund 17 can buy. Whatever it is, instead of spending $400,000, basically, for two ambulances, a used one and a new one, we'd spend $200,000 for a brand-new one. And have a newer ambulance sooner than, you know, waiting till after July 1st to order. So I just wanted to echo that I think that, I think that goes with Finance's guidance, which again is not binding on this group, to try to not do these budgetary things that lead to maintenance. Although I will say Erica's point is good, anything you buy could lead to maintenance. But two ambulances is certainly a new program versus one. So I guess I hope this commission will at least consider that as an option. That's it.
Anyone else?
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Mike, I apologize for this, but the Board of Finance didn't actually send forward anything to the ARPA committee or the Fire Department to research this, other than a suggestion that was up during the meeting, number one. Number two, the specification by the Fire Department, not the Board of Finance, you're limiting us to what we're able to do by our contract. You're strictly limiting us to what we're allowed to do by the contract between the fire service and the town load. I understand where you're going, and this is why Fund 17 was designed for a new ambulance. I understand, absolutely understand what you're trying to do, although I think it's being done the wrong way.
Okay, I understand your comment. Review the contract, and you'll see that any of these capital things have to be approved by the Board of Finance. It's very clear in the contract.
The specifications and bidding is between the Fire Department and the Business Manager.
But capital, but capital projects and use of are clearly written in the contract as to be approved by the Board of Finance. It's in black and white.
Oh, Tom, Tom's at the side.
I just wanted to ask through the chair, Chairman McCoo, was, I want to make sure that wasn't a vote of the Board of Finance, did I understand that right? What you proposed, that was?
Yes, as I said, it was purely a suggestion. The Board of Finance doesn't have any power to direct the ARPA Commission to do this. The Board of Finance's power would be in the capital program or the operating budget.
Okay, I think it's important, I think you know this from our last meeting, that we did, the Board of Finance's input weighed heavily on, this is actually a motion is still on the table to purchase the ambulance, and we held off on that out of, kind of, from my mind, out of respect for you and the Board of Finance, after their recommendations before the last meeting, as far as the three things, I think, the three things you said. So I just, I just want you to know that, and I just wanted to clarify that if it wasn't a vote of the Board of Finance, that this is a suggestion, right? Okay, thanks.
Matt Clark, I see your hands.
Yeah, I think I would think there would be, make a lot more sense to replace the problematic ambulance that we have now with a new one. It's a one-time fee. I'm less concerned about adding maintenance costs on the road, because it's a new ambulance, so those won't occur for quite a while. This, that'd provide the backup that the Fire Department appears to want. It would cut our maintenance fee, I mean, one new ambulance and one used ambulance is better than two used ambulances, in my mind. And then we, that would move the ambulance off of the CIP budget, as Mike indicated, allowing for some needed repairs and things like that, and you can go on. I think it's a pretty good solution.
Can I just make a clarification? The ambulance coming off of capital improvements doesn't, it's off Fund 17, which is the equipment repair. So it's an off-budget item, it's not going to affect the overall, it shows in there, but it doesn't come off taxation. So it doesn't help the bottom line.
Not directly.
Not, it does not help the bottom line, CIP directly.
So it could cut the budget up on the fact. Yeah. That's true. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands. Oh, Jenny Arpin.
Yes, hi, I have a quick question for Chief Moore. So as you may know, my department has moved over to the senior center, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware of the fact that there are two tracts of senior housing over there. So my question to Chief Moore. So my question to Chief Moore is what would happen if we only had one ambulance and two calls came in over in the senior housing area?
So currently, when we don't have either way, if it's two calls, if the senior center came in first, we're going to be there. Either way, the members of both departments will be hopefully at each call. Um, right now, it's only, you know, whichever call comes first, the ambulance is going to go to, um, and then
So.
we rely on the mutual aid. Currently, we're relying on mutual aid. If there's two calls right now, we're waiting on two ambulances to come in.
So if there were two calls, so if there were two calls in the same building over in senior housing, the ambulance would come and then we'd have to wait for mutual aid to take the next?
We would assess and then whichever the highest priority would go first.
Okay, thank you.
But then if you wouldn't have anyone on staff
Correct. Correct. There is no plan to add staffing unless we knew there was a dedicated volunteer crew that was going to run the ambulance. It's not going to be on the road twenty-four hours a day, so they, it's not, this solely is a, you know, the, the biggest reason is to have a backup. Currently, we've been out without an ambulance for ten days. Relying on our mutually partners to come in to tap. That's almost twenty calls that we've missed in ten days. Off.
One more question to Chief Moore, or Tom Smith, is, is this commission representative of, of the departments? Um, sorry, I said one of those senior. Um, so if there's, there's no plan to add staffing, has there been discussion between the two departments as to what the level of volunteers you have is that would be able to respond to a call? Uh, let's say middle of the day, right? That's probably what we think of as, at the most difficult time, because your volunteers are probably working another job. Has there been support from both departments?
We haven't had those talks yet because we haven't, it hasn't been secured yet, we don't know. So that is something, you know, when we've done this, we've done it for years, that we use Willington Hill drivers for, um, to go with us.
But I think I'd ask that another, but your plan would be that if they were qualified
Yep.
um, volunteers, then they would get in that second ambulance.
Yep, I know me and Mr. Smith have done any calls together.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the ambulance, or for three? Okay, it looks like we can move on to the next project, which is the, uh, ARPA five, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the SCVA air packs. And this is a Willington Hill Fire Department request, and I see Chief Snyder on green. It's made himself visible.
Yep, hello, everybody. So this request was initially for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for, um, fourteen air packs. These air packs we currently have, um, in service, but they are, um, two thousand, uh, nineteen ninety-four air packs and were upgraded in two thousand and four. Um, and now they will not be compliant, uh, by NFPA standards or the manufacturer's standard um, in twenty twenty-three, starting in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so it's pretty much a must-replace at this point in time. It's been on the CIP plan for a few years, um, knowing that these, uh, air packs have a, uh, basically a drop-dead date of, uh, January one, twenty twenty-three. So, um, again, these are the air packs that we wear in any, uh, toxic environment, um, smoke, fire, um, carbon dioxide, things like that. And, um, again, we currently have fourteen packs to replace life for life. Um, one thing that, uh, I did, and I haven't gotten any response back or heard anything from any new proceeding in particular, uh, the, uh, price up, update that I gave you. I don't know if you received that or not.
Oh, um, this was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, I'd say a couple of weeks ago, yeah, at this point. So anyway, the, um, the updated price that I got, uh, surprised me and it was reduced uh, because the manufacturer, uh, went back to the, uh, or the dealer, I guess, went back to the manufacturer and kind of put a squeeze on them to say, um, we're going to need to buy these air packs, we're going to be doing it soon. Uh, they did put a, uh, expiration date on the quote of three twenty-six, twenty-two, and the new quote is one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and change. So it's a significant reduction, but again, um, with the way things are going and the supply chain shortages and things like that, um, they can't guarantee that price any longer than three twenty-six, twenty-two. Um, so again, that's where we are, we, as of January first, um, those air packs that we have, um, certainly functional, but they will be a extreme liability. And, um, from where I sit as a chief, I won't have anybody use them in a life-threatening situation wearing one. Um, so again, that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Yeah, can, can you repeat the new price? Because I didn't get the whole thing, one hundred and thirteen, is that what you said?
Yes, one thirteen, three thirty-eight, and thirty-five cents.
Okay.
And again, that's a reduction from the one thirty-seven that was initially quoted, um, when I put together the CIP plan.
Uh, okay, are there any questions for Chief Snyder about the air packs? And I, I can confirm as CIP Chair that this is a project that's been on a CIP plan for a couple of years. It was slated for this year, and the CIP Commission asked for the ARPA Commission to look upon this favorably because it does alleviate, um, expenditure from somewhere under CIP plan.
So I, I have simply a comment. I'm going to preface my comment with I one hundred percent support this. This is without a doubt something that we need, um, absolutely in keeping with, um, some of the direct related costs that come out of COVID. But what I will say is, as we're talking about different items that have, um, ongoing costs associated to them in a budget, this without a doubt is one. So we don't look at these things and, and say, just because it's going to cost us money down the road, we don't want to do, we want to weigh it. And, you know, the additional public safety to both this item and like the, the second ambulance come out. This has been something, this has been CIP, it's followed along the plan. This alleviates some funding in Fund Seventeen, it's absolutely necessary, but it is going to be a recurring cost for us. So when we use the argument that we don't want to spend anything that has a recurring cost, this is what I mean when I say everything, we're committing to, you know, we're going to have to replace these. Is it ten years, Tom, is that the timeframe?
Um, it's longer than ten years, the years, the ones that we currently have are nineteen ninety-four air packs.
But there, there is going to be a cost down the road, and, and they will end up in a CIP plan down the road. Now, I don't suppose when it gets to that point, you would ever say, well, we're not going to fund those because we use free ARPA money. So while there are some things that are going to give us costs, it's, you know, we, we weigh that out. But I just want us to keep that in mind when we're talking about just the blanket statement of not wanting to have anything that has an, an additional cost.
The, the only thing on that note, I mean, this is, um, uh, basically not an additional project, so it won't be adding additional. This has been something that's been on the budget for years and years, we've had air packs here. So it's, it's basically a program that already exists and has been
I disagree with that, Tom, and, and again, needed. And when it gets to that point, it will have my full support, it's absolutely needed. But when we blanketly say as a group, we don't, we aren't going to do something, this is, these are the kinds of things that there are going to be costs. If something happens to one of them, we're not going to question whether or not we replace because it's, it's necessary. So I just, in the same spirit of public safety, I want us to look at them all at the same length. But this is without a doubt something, Tom, I think is necessary. Did you say twenty twenty-three they have to be replaced?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, as of January one, twenty, twenty twenty-three, they are.
That's a long time, is there any, um, negative impact on us purchasing them sooner?
No, there won't be any negative, um, impact. It will reduce, I mean, it may reduce the shelf life by a couple of months because it's going to take some time to get them in. I, I think the, uh, last time I spoke about it to the, uh, vendor was, uh, four to six months. So again, it was in CIP initially, so that July one, four to six months after that, we would have them before January one, twenty twenty-three.
Sometimes you like to wait until the last minute because you want to get the most life out of some items. But if this is something we could purchase sooner, um, not only to get them in your hands, but to save some money, I want to make sure there wouldn't be a negative impact there.
Yeah, no, like I said, maybe a couple of months, because by the time this gets approved and the money gets spent, committed to the vendor and they order it and stuff, we'll probably look at September, October, as opposed to the end of December. So a couple of months will be there.
Yeah.
Um, oh, I, I saw Peter Tanaka's hand up first, but then I see you, Peter.
Peter Tanaka, one twenty-five Mason Road, Wellington. I, I, first of all, I, I think that there's nothing more important to, to our firefighters than breathing. And so breathing is good. Secondly, um, this has been an on, ongoing cost, a reoccurring cost. And when I think a lot of us are, are, are reviewing ongoing costs and whether it affects our spending on ARPA funds, it's whether it's a new reoccurring cost or a reoccurring cost that the town has already, uh, been dealing with. And I think that we can't put all reoccurring costs under the same blanket that we need to, to differentiate between current ongoing costs and new ongoing costs. Thank you.
Peter, what's in it?
Peter expressed the comment that wants to make perfectly. A fundamental difference between a new referred price that exists in current status. This has been a CIP for
Anyone else in Zoom land or here in the room? Okay. Thanks, thanks, Chief Snyder.
Thank you.
We will, we will move on to ARPA number six, sixty-nine thousand for a generator for Department of Public Works. Troy is here to tell us about the generator address.
Okay, so basically the current generator, generator we have now is only a twenty-five thousand KW. We're looking to purchase a sixty thousand KW. Um, the generator also runs the dog pound there. Um, so basically, what it is now is, uh, when the power goes out, we have to manually start it. This generator would be an automatic start. So if the, if there's a big fire and the power is out, I have to send somebody in there, if the fire trucks need fuel or something like that. Um, this one would run automatically. Uh, we actually lost power the other day and, uh, the generator restarted it up. And when the dog pound heat kicked on, it actually clicked the circuit breaker off, so we had to keep switching back and forth with things we wanted to do. So it was, especially during emergency situation, that's one less thing where a guy has to be there to babysit a generator.
You weren't able to function in the public works garage. No. It was have heat in the dog pound or be able to use their computers and be able to function or answer the phone that, um, there, so. The current one is definitely not working.
Any, any questions about the generator? I, I have one question. So what, what has occurred to me is if, if we were to approve all of these expenditures asked, requested, which I know we're going to have some, some changes to a couple of them, um, like the last one we just heard about, we don't have enough money available in, in the first tranche. Um, that is, so we, something is going to have to wait until July first or, or until we get that second amount. Um, I think we could approve it with that stipulation, but I'm just looking at what projects that could potentially be. Um, and maybe we don't need to, in the end, um, maybe the math will work out. But if, if we did, is it something that we need right away or could wait till July? Or is there a long wait time for any order and that sort of thing?
Uh, the wait time shouldn't be, you know, just like everything else. But I mean, is it something that you need, I mean, hopefully we don't lose power, but I mean, it's something that probably could be intentional. You know, I would rather see a new ambulance be purchased than, you know, a generator that's going to take.
All right, it's, it might be okay.
The end, it's hit, I think hit or miss because I believe it was an accident
You were.
on three twenty to cause the power to go out.
Right.
So, you know, we were fine until that point, and we seemed to be through the worst, I dare say, the worst of the, the winter weather at this point. And that's what we worry about, but as we get into
Hurricane.
wind season, um, anything could come up. But it was interesting that, that the power had gone out there and they just, you know, they were crippled. It was, you know, what do you want to do? And I think of everything there, right? Some water, or it's use the bathrooms, the facilities, if it were in the middle.
The doors.
The door, they can't open the big garage doors. Had this been in the middle of a winter storm, um, you know, so it's timing. So I agree, it's, you know, sooner rather than later, but public safety, I would say.
Are any other questions, comments? Oh, I think I see, um, Phil Stevens. Yeah.
Yeah, Phil Stevens, Superintendent Schools. Hey Troy, can that other generator that you currently have be used for anything else?
It is portable, so it could be used if there was a function or something. There is, you know, you can plug like a regular extension cord into it, or if there was something down at the park, if the park was hooked up, you could use it for something like that. So yes, it is portable and it could be used for other things.
Is it big enough to, I, I mean, if we lose power at the TOB, there's no backup there? Is, would it run heat at the TOB?
To be honest, I, you'd have to ask an electrician, but I couldn't give you a yes or no answer with that.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm sure it could do something anyway. There's multiple furnaces in the building, so if it was, even if you ran one side of the building for right now, you'd have to switch something over.
I mean, you're saying it's either the garage, but you don't have a furnace running there.
We have the waste oil furnace.
So is that, I mean, what's kicking up when the heat goes on in the dog pound, which is very small compared to the size of the
Right, that's electric heat, so everything's tied in, so it's clicking something off.
Interesting.
There's only a fifty-amp breaker on the generator.
So it's not like we need to get rid of it from your purpose in the event of emergency somewhere else. We won't be running the EOC from here with it, that's what I'm hearing. We'll be plugging in a bunch of computers.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Um, and thank you, Troy. Um, let's see, ARPA seven is the next one, and I see Phil is here. Um, this is twenty thousand dollars for air conditioning at the Hallmore School Bandroom.
Thanks, so this has been on CIP for a few years now. Um, one of the things that we're looking to do is increase security. The bandroom is at the back of the school and that space, when all of those windows are open, you have, it's ground level, you have direct access to all of that. There are very few spaces at Hall School that are ground level. Um, and this is one of them. Uh, and so it's an area where, you know, if, if it's hot out, we're, we're opening windows, we're just providing access. It's not, uh, a great strategy. So this would obviously help in the bandroom with the instruments as well. But the primary reason for this is, is around security. Um, Christine, I heard you, uh, say a couple of minutes ago about, uh, pushing something off. This is definitely one of those things that you could push off, I think, just from the standpoint of, um, we're still trying to get quotes on the best way to handle this. I, I had written into CIP that this could be a, um, multi-use unit. Some of the units now heat and cool. Um, and it might, the, the unit ventilators that for heat in that room, uh, are older. And so I think they're forty years plus at this point. And so if we can, uh, kill two birds with one stone, it might make sense to do that. Uh, but we're still waiting for an updated quote and they need to engineer it. And I think it was, um, Alex Moore said, you know, it's hard to go out and get an actual number i- if you don't have funding. People don't want to come out and, and, uh, give you real numbers when you don't even know if you have this, you know, any, any of the, the project to go through. So that's where we're at this point in time, but primary purpose is really security-based.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. No, I know this quote is, is old, and again, you struggle like the rest of us do with trying to get real quotes without dollars. Um, are you thinking like maybe one of a mini-slip similar to what, what had been recommended? We didn't end up going with it, uh, by one vendor at the senior center, and then Troy, you've used the public works just larger. Is that something we think we'd be looking at?
Correct, it's a taller ceiling because it's the old, um, tech room, yeah. And so because it's a taller ceiling, that's why it needs to be engineered. So, uh, we have EMCOR just coming out to try and see if they can size something so that we can, you know, get a, a proper, that's what makes the big impact. If the, if the heat adds too much to it and the cost, then we would just really be looking for the AC portion, unless you want to hear about the actual cost of it's, you know, heating and cooling, that's up to you.
I, I think I'd be interested in, in what the cost would be for the most efficient way to run this. And if that unit is more efficient than the, it really old, um, you know, ventilator that you have in there now. And my only concern is that when we look at this and, and hear Phil say we might want to push this, like one of those that we could push off, I think twenty thousand might be a little low.
Yeah, it might be.
Our estimate, so we might want to rethink that as we start. It's our estimate, so we might want to rethink that as we start to at least earmark dollars.
Yeah, okay. Um, I see Kathy Demers raising her hand.
Uh, Kathy Demers, forty-eight Mason Road. Hi, hello. I have a question about um, this from a ARPA perspective. Um, kind of a two-part question. How does this relate to public health um, with ARPA? And also did the schools get a separate ARPA fund that they can use?
So the, the schools did get additional funding. Um, it was not for, I'm not sure if this project would qualify. We focused, uh, we had to check different boxes, impact student learning, things like that. Um, and so this was not one of our priority things, which is why it was left on CIP. Uh, and I think it was the CIP group that made the recommendation to move it over to, to this fund as, as potential.
Okay.
And this also, i- it's not necessarily uh, as much a public health thing, but that, I don't believe that room in particular has um, the old, the ventilation that was in that room was for the shop class and there's no ventilation now. Uh, it needs the ventilation and that would, that could be part of the system.
Yeah, that might, that might be a way to help it to come under ARPA is, is to have that um, extra feature. Thanks.
I saw Matt Clark's hand and then Samantha.
The, I just have a simple question. Has the, the school um, board or the school superintendent or the ARPA committee looked at um, using this money to repair our school roofs, which, which we apparently never fixed? So I'm is that possible?
I think that Christina, oh, sorry. If you would um, allow me to speak to Matt, I think that I can speak to both the question that Kathy and Matt had. Okay, so, I mean, I'm, I can't speak to whether we've looked into it using, I haven't heard anything about that, Matt. Um, to, to what Kathy was speaking is how does the um, air conditioning come under ARPA? And I think that one thing that I don't know if, I thought, I, sorry, I was getting into it at the beginning. I don't know if it was addressed at the beginning as we explained our process of how we are going to determine, um, you know, how to distribute this funding. But the federal government put out what's called the final rule. And under the final rule, there are five headings of categories. And one of those headings is a revenue loss category. And under the revenue loss category, you can take up to ten million dollars as a municipality, which is more than our award. So it, we have the potential to take the entire one point seven million dollar award and we could spend it on the air conditioner, we could spend it on the roof, we, we could do it on those things. Um, because we can talk about it as revenue loss. Now with the air conditioning specifically, I do know that ventilation systems is something that could be addressed because they were so relevant to the bacteria um, during COVID. So I don't know, so I think it kind of can do double duty in terms of falling under a potential category. So that one almost, I know could be in compliance. I don't know if the roofs could only be under the revenue loss category, but that was my understanding from reading the final rule and from reading Connecticut Conference of Municipalities uh, summary on the final rule. But I don't think that the roof project has been proposed as an official ARPA proposal.
That's, that's correct. It hasn't been proposed and the way Samantha explained it, I think is correct.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the roofs are not leaking and the roof projects were canceled by the state, not by the superintendent of schools. So just to be clear about that, I, I had nothing to do with that. They made the decision not to provide the funding until the town determined whether they were going, going to renovate a school, um, build a new school or do nothing. Um, there's also a newer, Samantha was just speaking about ventilation. There is proposed, uh, I don't know if it's legislation or how they're doing it that, but they're looking at ventilation as one of the um, items that could be school reimbursable, which it currently is not. Um, and, and there was a lot of complaints about that because you could be looking at three quarters of a million dollars just to add ventilation to Hall School at this point in time. Um, so that, that's something that, you know, we'll watch in the future. Obviously, if uh, this SBC says, you know, makes a proposal and the town doesn't go for it and there's nothing done to those buildings, then that will be the time to go back to the roof projects, look at ventilation and what other CIP projects there are.
Uh, if I can speak to Phil's point, so CCM, um, which Town of Wellington is a member of, I serve as vice chair of the education committee um, at CCM and one of the proposals we made and I presented with our legislation um, was to support um, state funding for ventilation in schools as part of school construction. So I know that's making some headway, um, and, and folks from CCM will be speaking out on that topic and in support of. So, you know, I hope that that can be included in. What most towns are, are finding is um, we would not have enough money in ARPA if we wanted to simply redo the ventilation in our schools. Um, and, and I don't, you know, towns our size certainly didn't have the, the funding. Even if we had taken every dollar that the school had been given and like Phil said, they have to check certain boxes, would have enough money to redo all their ventilation. So it's important at some point that I think the state step up to assist with this.
Any other hands up? I don't see any others.
Thank you.
From my side, Steven. Um, now moving on to ARPA number fifteen, thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine for premium pay for human services staff. And I believe Jenny is here um, to talk about it. And I know, um, I can give a little bit of background on what has just happened in the last week, which is that um, or at least the last time we were all together as a group, we were talking about the difficulties with this particular request because it was split between the operating budget and the, and the ARPA funds over three years and how mixing the, mixing those concepts together is problematic for us and also for the firefighters. So um, uh, we had the brainstorm of separating out, they're basically breaking it down into two different projects uh, or requests, that's, that's, that's really is what they are. The first one is for um, an increase in pay for the human services staff. And the, the recommendation to the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance put the plan favorably was to have that go through the operating budget as it normally does. And then to separate out the request to have twenty-two peak of a senior center coordinator. And um, have that be the ask of the ARPA commission to fund at least for one year and, and put aside some funds for the following year or, or two. Um, in the event that um, so that if, if it does go well, next year, um, ARPA could fund some percentage of it. I think we said fifty percent and then twenty-five percent the following year so that the Board of Finance starts to ramp up to fund it fully if it is indeed something that the town wants to adopt going forward. So I think I explained it.
Yeah, right, so, right, again, the original um, suggestion that came out of the Board of Finance and I appreciate Christina um, working with us to come up with, what we thought was uh, an alternative method that would um, get us farther. And it was always only to see something we thought was incredibly necessary and then came out of COVID. The increased um, responsibility and work and um, clientele in the human services department and the need over at the senior center now with, with them being out, without um, staff. They never had paid staff, they've only had volunteer staff. And that volunteer member um, finally decided to retire from her work at um, ninety-six, I think. So we are thankful to all the time she gave, but there's a need in that community and it, it certainly speaks to the work that needs to come out of ARPA. And so now we'd be asking just for ARPA to fully fund the senior center coordinator position. In this year, sixty-six percent of it in year two and thirty-three percent in year three. Um, and then separate out the increases in the current staff, completely separate, that actually in um, made a reduction in the operating budget. Um, and it, it will be a, if I'm reading Donna's proposal here, it will change the amount from thirty-four thousand, so when we look to move on this, it will be a little bit different. But I think um, I know someone spoke at, at Board of Selectment earlier, you know, as if there was an intent to hide things from the public. And that's never the intent here, it was to ease the burden of a, a new service and it's something that we think is incredibly vital. And again, this is something that I think speaks to COVID dollars and, and working with our, our most vulnerable population over at the senior center. And so the intent is simply to find a way to manage this and manage it without um, a heavy burden on the taxpayer initially. But then eventually, if this program, if we see, you know, the town sees the value, then it would become part of the operating budget and using the funds while we have them to ease that burden um, onto, because what I wouldn't propose is that ARPA fully pay for it for three years and then boom, on the fourth year, we ask the town to fully fund it when we, we knew it was coming. So phase our way into it to sort of lessen that cost. And unlike, you know, some of the projects you'll see before us, this is really the only new staff um, that I think will come out of the Board of Selectment side. Um, I don't necessarily think that's a good idea um, without being able to know that you could afford it. But again, um, these are the folks we knew initially were incredibly affected by COVID. Will help that financially.
Um, I see Matt Clark's hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that this is not good financial management. We shouldn't be spending um, one-time money to spend, to, to fund um, new positions in town government. If we feel as though we need a new coordinator, then we should fund it through taxation and not one-time COVID money, COVID emergency money. Um, the uh, you know, uh, when, when COVID first started in our last budget, I, I'm the one who sponsored and, and made a suggestion in the Board of Finance that we increase the amount of money we put into our social services budget. I understand the need and I, and I agree with it. I just don't think it should be done in this way with this money.
Peter.
Peter, which nine so, trust, bro. I want to share a concern that Mr. Clark just raised. This is exactly what it seems our folks saying we shouldn't do, create an recurring expense, a staff position. It's all difficult to believe that we all want this, it seems wonderful. But to do it this way, to me, seems to undermine the ARPA commission. Like not funding one shot items, the rest of this seems to represent scourge.
Um, I see Kathy Demers, can you add that?
Hi Kathy Demers, forty-eight Mason Road. Um, I strongly support um, moving forward with the town, uh, this commission to uh, consider hiring a coordinator for the senior center. It's vitally important for this population. Um, they're the most vulnerable, they were probably the most affected um, besides probably families with children uh, by COVID. And we're still in a pandemic, they're still the most vulnerable. And it's really important to have somebody who's designated to provide direction and oversight and administrative duties um, at the senior center. We have this wonderful building and in town, when I looked at the census bureau data, we have twenty percent of our Wellington population is sixty and older. Um, we, we need a person that can be there um, to help people improve their physical and social and mental health. Um, I'm a geriatric nurse practitioner and I can tell you that as, as we all get older, we're more at risk for isolation, depression, uh, physical health problems, falls and having an active and healthy senior center and somebody managing of what it takes to do that now is vital for our seniors and for all of us as we age. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I say that it, this began as a budgeted item with the Board of Selectment and all three selectmen um, felt that it was uh, best to move this to ARPA and, and agreed to this. So again, listen, if in a year the town didn't support this position, um, we'd be looking at a different direction and we wouldn't necessarily be able um, to afford it. And that is a risk we take using ARPA. Um, but with the increased budget we had this year, this is the direction we chose. But it began as a budgeted item on the Board of Selectment, so it, we didn't bypass that um, portion.
Okay. Okay, thank you all for commenting on that one. Um, ARPA sixteen, two hundred and thirty-five thousand for radios for the fire departments. I see Chief Moore isn't here.
Alex had to go to work. Tom Snyder's available to speak to that as well or not?
And I think Alex is joining us because
There you go.
He's on the map. Yeah.
He maybe have a little bit of ability to speak.
There he is.
Do you? Christina, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, unless Chief Snyder wants, I'll just give a brief overview. It's a, um, this is the going to the same, same system that Public Works is on now. Um, this will outfit both fire trucks, or sorry, fire departments with uh, onto the state system. Um, it's much more reliable throughout town than our current system. Uh, and it'll outfit every fire truck and all of our officers.
Okay. Um, and, and there is a time um, benefit to, to this if it's purchased before April first, is that correct?
Yeah, there's, for, for most of the radios, there's an increase as April first of nine percent.
Uh, is there anything that you'd like to add, Tom, Chief Snyder?
No, just like Chief Moore said, that this is imperative to the operation of the fire department. We have problems all over the place and, and we're fortunate that it hasn't caused injury or anything uh, worse than that uh, because we lose communication all the time or we're trying to decipher what was said. Uh, but this system here seems with all intents and purposes to uh, be able to solve that problem and uncover the whole town. So again, it's a uh, life-saving measure, if you would.
Is there any comments or questions on this? See any hands up in Zoom?
Can I ask Troy to comment on how his operation changed by going from the old system?
Sure.
It's amazing, they're crystal clear. Um, there, we can hear them a long ways. I can, I, I just live in Canterbury, because they, this, they could talk to them in Canterbury. Um, compared to the old system, I know going through like the forest, they would lose it, the guys were concerned. Now we have, I haven't found a spot in town that the radios don't work, inside or outside. Um, we use, I use a portal in the garage, I can hear the guys all day long, crystal clear. So I would, this is an important thing. I feel that it's, it's a huge safety issue and I know the guys are happy with them, you know, even plowing snow and stuff, so.
I know early on, um, in my tenure, I rode along with all of our drivers so I could see all the parts of town and there were areas of town where we would wait to have to get, I think a little chill area, until we got down under thirty-two before um, they could have radio contact with the rest of his crew again. And, and I thought that can't be um, a great safety mechanism. And then they're forced to be on their cell phone to be able to communicate with each other in terrible weather. And now to hear, you know, when Troy shared that initially, we got the news that he can hear them, you know, when he's home as well out of Wellington. Um, the, the safety aspect is immeasurable when we're talking about communicating, I think during tropical storms, when they need to communicate all over town um, in any accident situation.
For the first time, we'd all be in the same band, they would call our equipment would be, be able to talk to each other. And when the storms uh, last summer, fall, uh, we run around for power, lines down, trees down. We can hop over to Public Works channel, say, hey, we have a tree down, not blowing any wires, can you come here? And if they came across something, they would hop to our channel and tell us, say, we don't have wires down, don't give your help out of that. Um, so the interoperability just between the different departments. It's very helpful.
And, um, I'm just going to skip ahead to ARPA 4 because it's related, right? It's right, to get some more.
This would furnish the rest of all the equipment. Like right now, there is a radio in the mall or a radiator, um, and some other vehicles. This would actually purchase a base unit to afford.
Okay.
And we talked about putting one here, so there was a need to communicate. Yeah.
And what about the buses that can still?
So Phil, Phil's been, it's on his agenda. We're trying to work with, with someone we know to try to speed along his process.
I got an answer. I have an answer. I literally got an email today, um, that we were approved. So we just got special permission for our seven buses in our schools to use the, uh, portable radios for emergency purposes. It's not the day-to-day. Um, the ice storm would have been a perfect example, example of this where our buses were parked for an hour not too long ago. Um, and they would have also, the emergency personnel in Public Works would have direct access to each individual bus and to the school. So we would be able to communicate. So we just got permission to, uh, an email came through today. So we would be on the same system in an emergency situation.
Any other? Yeah, that's awesome. Any other questions or comments about, and I think you, we can go for either 16 or four, for the Public Works or Fire Service.
Okay, I have one. So far, I've appreciated the explanation and seen where everything relates to the intent of ARPA. And it looks like, um, ARPA 15 for human services. Uh, what could be more appropriate? And we have seen, um, all of the initiatives coming out of, uh, the Human Services Department on behalf of our, uh, older residents and just everyone really. So I do hope that, uh, that will be approved. And I'm, I'm so pleased with the radios and all of these, so up to this point, I think have merit. I'm sure ARPA 3 with the, with the ambulance, there'll probably be some more discussion to see how we can do that, our objective there. But I just wanted to make, uh, those comments and thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, all right, um, any other questions? All right, but I think for that, we can move on to ARPA 14, uh, 300,000 for small business and nonprofit assistance program. And I think we have Mike Tomato here and also Samantha to talk to that request.
Okay, um, so the, um, EDC has been discussing for a while the, um, need to provide small business grants, um, to, um, Wellington businesses that can, basically in response to COVID, we, we all understand that there were different ways that all, everybody was affected by COVID. But one of the things that's really important is that we sort of do what we can to ensure that the businesses in town can get back to pre-COVID operations as quickly as possible. There are other communities that have rolled out this type of program and it was very successful. Um, and so this request and the process by which we will operate, um, you know, going through from start to finish are all modeled based on, um, what's been done in other communities. So, um, this is not a loan. This is not something that everybody in Wellington will be eligible for. And so the EDC has worked through that criteria. This will not be a subjective process where the EDC will review and decide how much someone is, oh, is, is granted. Um, this will be, um, sort of a yes or no, if they meet the criteria or, or they do not. Large-scale businesses, um, that, you know, for example, like a FedEx or a TA would not be eligible. Businesses that did not exist prior to COVID would not be eligible. And businesses which are not ru- rooted in Wellington community would not be eligible. I know there were some other questions, so I'll leave it there and kind of go from any, any questions or thoughts that folks might have.
I'll just add on to that, Mike. Thank you. Last time, some of the things that had come up were, I had mentioned businesses that might have closed and how we would address those. So we had gone back and discussed, we can't obviously fund a business that's not active, um, that is closed. So that was the answer on that one. Um, I did look, I was, you had inquired, the committee had inquired about how many active businesses we had. So as of today, we have 362 active businesses. I didn't filter that to find out if any of them had been started and, you know, we'd have to come off with the cutoff time. So maybe last, um, June or something, when we first got the first check. Of how many, you know, how many were started after that date. And the other question you guys had asked was about, why did we write 5 to 15? And how would we decide that? So that was a misunderstanding on my part. We will choo- select an amount based on, um, the funding that we receive and the requests that we receive. And everybody will get the same amount. So, um, the reason it was written as 5 to 15 is that it depended on how much funding we were awarded by the committee. So I just wanted to clarify those.
Thank you Samantha, I think there's a lot of questions I have. One of the, the other questions that, uh, came up at our last meeting, and, and I want to just kind of address it, is that there was discussion of, depending on how many businesses you had and how much money you gave out, if there was money left, EDC would be looking to do other things with it. Um, I, I just want to clarify that, I know I took a, a pretty hard stance on, on that from my perspective, but that this, any, any money that ARPA would agree to for this proposal would have to be used solely for the purpose of, um, the benefit programs to small businesses and nonprofits, is that correct?
Yes, we did, um, actually change that because of the things that we had talked about, that kind of falling under, like, one of, those two things fell under different, uh, categories of those five overarching categories. So, um, I did bring that back to the, uh, commission and they, you know, agree that it should just be 300,000 for the businesses, which means instead that they would get larger grant, you know, we were thinking they may, um, we might have something left over, but I don't, I don't think we will with, given the number of businesses and even some of the people that we've been talking to. So, um, and I tried to alter it, but it wasn't working. I know someone else had mentioned that too. I tried to go in and edit my, um, edit what Rick had put in there, um, but I couldn't, if he wasn't available to do that today. But I, I couldn't do it. So, yeah, it would be the 300,000 just for the, um, this program where we're distributing it to small businesses. And we all, you even asked some questions about East Windsor, which I think Mike is, uh, like, better able to speak on, uh, particularly about following up on, um, after they demonstrate a need, a revenue loss, and describe how they're going to be using the money, our level of follow-up. So Mike, if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Yeah, so, um, East Windsor handed out, um, I believe it was 1.1 million dollars in small business grants. So, um, we will be using the, basically, the, the same agreement that they have with the commute, with the businesses when they handed those funds out. So it, it's in a, an agreement between, um, the town and these folks about how the funds will be used. And sort of what is, what is required and, and what is not expressed in the town giving them these grants. So, you know, I don't anticipate there to be any issues with, with how we administer it, only because I've seen so much money handed out through East Windsor's process in the same manner. But, um, we're asking them to demonstrate and show us that they have been negatively impacted. So if we're going to be giving out grants of $10,000 and they submit an application that shows that they have had a financial, have had a, a financial loss in excess of $10,000, we're not so mu- it's not so much at looking forward with the, with the money, because we're replacing revenue that they've already lost. So we're trying to make them whole. So we're not as focused on how they spend each dollar from the moment they get the money from us moving forward, because we're, we're trying to recoup what, what they've already not seen. Um, to my knowledge, that we've had no issues with it in East Windsor and, and, um, you know, the, the agreement is, is very substantial as far as what they can and cannot do. Um, so I, I think it will be successful.
My, a couple of my questions from our last meeting were, um, do you know how many, how, how much their grant was? Right, so you're talking about giving the same amount to everybody. Um, how much they gave out in East Windsor per business?
I think that they were 10,000.
Right, and do you know how many they gave out? Well, you said they gave out 1.1 million?
I think they were, yeah, somewhere between 1 and 1.4.
Yeah. Um, and then the other question we had, Samantha was, I think, slightly unsure how long this process would last, right? So she talked about leaving it open up, my understanding was it was a shorter, um, process than that, right? There's a very specific time to apply and then the funds were given out. It wasn't open for, you know, two, 18 months or so.
Yeah, you know, I think that in East Windsor especially, you know, one of the things that they really struggled with was, was getting businesses to realize that they could just submit an application and this wasn't some other thing that was going on. And, and they did a lot of door knocking and cold calling. So one of the things they found was just getting some of these folks to spend some time to sit down and fill out the application was the hardest part, because they're all busy running businesses. But I, I think that in speaking with Sam, we, we, we feel that providing a 60-day window would be more than ample time to have the applications come in. Um, and then we, we would turn that process off and, and go through and start making sure that they met the criteria, rather than reviewing them on like a rolling basis for a longer period of time.
My understanding of it, they started somewhere around July, June or July, and then, um, by, uh, mid-November or end of November, they were all done and now presenting that process to the rest of the state. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
In the event that there are more requests and there are available money, how do you determine who's going to get the money and who isn't?
Well, I think, you know, so the, the one thing that I, I even had to remind myself when we were dealing with this in, in East Windsor is the total number of businesses and the numbers, number of applications are very different as far from an eligibility standpoint. But, you know, I think that the idea would, would have to be, um, you know, we'll receive the applications and we'll deal with them in the order in which they're received. So if somebody applies and they don't meet the criteria or, or they haven't provided the information necessary, then we'll have to, um, move on to the next one. But I, you know, we haven't, I guess we could, we could come up with a more formal process if that was, was important to the, the commission here. But I think that's why we want to have the application period open, receive everything and, um, and then go through and, and look at what we have.
The idea that if you like open the application period for 60 days, that would give the majority of those people the opportunity. So they'd all start on level playing ground and had at least have had the chance to apply within those 60 days. I think the most surprising thing to me from the East Windsor process that was done is how much they had to ask people to apply. I think they were taken aback by how many people they had to knock on the door or, and call and get to come to the table. So.
So, anyone else have any questions or comments? And just so, so is, what is the amount that, that we're asking for exactly?
I mean, are they still asking for 300,000? Because originally, the 300,000 was going to be multi-use.
Right.
Well, I think that originally the 300,000 was going to be multi-use if it didn't get spent addressing, trying to kind of address what you had just spoken about, Erica, where, you know, there may not be enough people to apply. Um, I'm not sure if, because we have just discussed kind of changing this, uh, to a 60-day window and decided on the 60-day window. I think one part that we didn't kind of go over my, Mike, and it's not as clear to me, but I was under the impression with the shorter 60-day window and the range that we gave of 5 to 15, that what we would do is, um, when we get the requests in, we're going to base the amount on what we get and on the number of requests and give it to the businesses. So, do you understand? Like if we had.
If you get 20 that apply, you're going to evenly give out $300,000 to 20 businesses?
Well, not if it's obviously that, that much. I think it would be cap, capped at the 15. Capped at 15.
Last time, 20, you could do 60 at 5,000 and 20 at 15,000. So you're saying you're going to wait to see how many valid applications you have and then?
I'm not, I'm, that's, we didn't talk about that as a, because we just came up with the window of, um, I mean, that's one way to address what you're, what you're saying, because what would we do? We're requesting the 300,000 and what would we do if we didn't, you know, have, spend it all? Or we didn't have enough requests? So just taking the 300,000, uh, by 15,000, oh shoot, I'm sorry. That is 20 businesses. And we have 362 businesses registered as of today, and that didn't even touch the nonprofits. So I, I don't think that's going to be an issue, to be honest with you.
I mean, I think it's the reality, look at, you know, what was done in, in other towns. They were all, not everyone is negatively impacted and, and to whatever extent, you know, your group is determining.
So I, I think it, you know, in looking at the draft, um, Small Business and Nonprofit Assistance Program guideline that we had started working on with the EDC, as far as the eligibility and the documentation and et cetera, we, we had indicated that the, a grant award will not exceed 15,000. I think that once we get an approval from this body with an amount of money, we can look at that and we can, we can develop the final guidelines for the application. Because I, you know, we're not going to, um, I don't, I don't think we're going to look at the applications and make a decision on pricing or on the amount of money to be given out at that point. But I don't want to, I don't think the EDC wants to box themselves in on the, the specific grant awards, because we don't know how much ARPA is going to ultimately give us. And we want to have a little bit of flexibility so that we can make sure that we're using the funds in the, you know, most efficient manner. Certainly, uh, we're not going to, um, they need to be able to demonstrate that they've lost that amount of money. So they, that we're not going to get an application and have someone say, well, you know, so-and-so canceled on me and that cost me $600, so now I need a $10,000 grant application. That, they need to be able to show that they have had at least in excess of what we're going to award. But it, it's going to potentially hamstring the EDC if we have to say, this is the amount right now, because we don't know what the total allocation will be.
Thank you. Mike, I think your, Mike's question may have answered some of the things that Stuart, you brought up last time about how they were determining the need and saying, at the very least, they have to have demonstrated a loss equal to the grant. I, I can think of no better, uh, use, well, aside from some of the public safety things, um, for ARPA than assisting in our small businesses. And that, this was a priority for the Board of Selectment, um, from the minute we found out we were getting these federal funds. So I think it's important. I just wanted to understand exactly how the process would work.
I have a question. Could you possibly put it into two categories? So like, $3,000 or less and then 5,000 to, I don't know, $5,000? Just so, because I wonder if, if you do a $5,000 grant, how many businesses really are under 362 that we have? 60? 60, okay.
I think that's a really good point, Robin, that there are two, there could be two different tiers, um, given the scope of businesses. And I actually spent time looking at each of those LLCs and each of those businesses and what were they? And it was 47 pages of businesses. So I did actually put some time into trying to determine what our business needs were, because I felt, I felt really bad not having that, uh, secret, that was from the Secretary of State website as well. So I felt bad not knowing that number off the top of my head at the last meeting, so I apologize. I was counting on Mike because he's a veritable source of information. I was counting on Mike because he's a veritable source of information. He's always got all the numbers and information. So, I was caught off guard. But anyway, a lot of them are like sole proprietorships or individual LLCs. It could be a painting, it could be a landscaping business. You know, there's a lot of different ones, but a lot of them are very small. And I think that that is a really good point. I think, I feel a lot for those businesses because I think they may have, I don't know how they do their taxes. I don't know if they, you know, they should obviously have, you know, schedule, schedules, you know, to show their, their business profit and loss so that they would have to submit those. Because without those, they wouldn't qualify. But those are people also that address something that Christina had talked about where, you know, people, she had mentioned PPP loans. And a sole proprietor business has no employees. So they could have taken a PPP loan, but it would never become a grant for them. So it was never just an infusion of cash into their business. It's a loan that they ultimately have to pay back, which they can't pay back because now they have lost revenue. So it's just a very difficult situation to be in when you're having a single person with a business. So looking into two tiers where there could be smaller grants and larger grants based on which one that they met is something that I would happily bring back to discuss with the EDC. And I think it's a great suggestion and could potentially meet more citizen needs and business needs in the town.
Thanks. Yeah, I just would hate to see someone miss out on getting something because they didn't quite meet the threshold of the 5,000, but they lost 3,500. I just, yeah.
And maybe when, and I, I know that work, the group is working really hard to make sure that we can take some of these funds and give back to those businesses. And I applaud on EDC for taking that on. But to Robin's point, it's a great idea. When you get all those applications, you may be able to weigh them and see you have more of those really, really small businesses and be able to, you know, utilize them even with a small amount instead of being able to meet a great loss. So, who knows?
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, I'll give everyone another chance to make any comments or questions about any of the items on the public hearing before we close the public hearing and move on to the rest of our meeting. Is there anyone out there anything to say? All right, so then we will close the public hearing and move on to our number seven on our agenda, which is just correspondence. And the only correspondence that I received was, and that I forwarded on to you all, was the letter from the attorney explaining the, why, why it's okay. The rationale behind how we can use this process going forward and how it's legal. I didn't receive any correspondence from any residents or anyone about any of these items. So there's no other comments to add to what, what we've already heard.
Did you proceed, I think I forwarded an email to you and to our business manager that talked about the timeframe we had to take action on the revenue loss portion. So I can't remember what that date is off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't either. I meant to print that.
I feel like sometime in April, I'll go back and check. But it's basically that we, and I think as an ARPA group, we need to decide if we're going to take the standard deduction or use the formula. And so the standard deduction allows us to take up to $10 million. And my understanding is that we don't have to say how much, but we're going to take the standard or we're going to take the formula. And I think we should decide that as a group.
Yeah.
Personal opinion and I think for Donna to be back to offer hers, if we take the standard deduction, it's just, it's simpler. We didn't get $10 million, so.
Right, right.
Felt like we have to decide how much of them.
Yeah, and she'll be back for our next meeting, which is April 4th. So we can have that on each other.
Yeah, if it has to be four, then I'll.
Yeah. Okay. So moving on to item number eight, funding request submission possible action. So this is the part of our meeting where we can potentially make motions to different petitions. And now it's just the way we would work is that we would, someone would make a motion, state the amount, the project number, the fact that it would come out of Fund 19, which is the name of the fund that has been assigned to the ARPA funds, and what the purpose of it would be and that's, is there anything else?
I think we had a motion on the table, so I'd have to just bring that back.
Okay.
If we want to, if we want to use that and move in that direction.
Yeah.
There's one to correct, correct me if I'm wrong. We left one on the table, so we don't have to take it up tonight. But if we choose to, that one is already there.
Hey Christina. Tom Smith, I'll move that we take, take the motion regarding the emails off the table.
I second.
So we're, we're back in discussion now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if, I'll just, I'll just say my piece a little bit on this. With due respect to all the, all the speakers, Chairman McCoo and, and all the others. I appreciate all, all the different comments. There's lots of different ways to slice a tomato and that's kind of what I'm hearing, you know, with this. I, I trust President Gannick from Wellington One and Chief Alex Moore. And this, they're telling us, they're telling all of us that this is how they want to go forward with this. And I support that. I support that and I recognize as the fact that there's a need right now and this is how they want to take care of that, that need. And, you know, they've been there for us through this whole thing. To this whole period. And so I, I just think sometimes you have to just, you know, support and, and just take, take the recommendations that your fire chief, the people that are providing this service. Not blank check, not any of that, but it seems awful reasonable to me and a good way forward. So I, I fully support that.
And, and Tom, just to, I'm just confused. Did you, did you vote to move it off the table? Or, or to keep it on the table?
Take it off the table.
Take it off. Okay.
Yeah, did, did we vote on, I'm sorry, Christina, did we vote to take it off the table yet?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. Well, that, so, yeah.
I wasn't sure what your motion was.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I guess you need to vote, vote on that and then we can talk about it, but I already did supply it.
Okay. All right, anyone else on the board have any comments about it?
About them, so we're now, we're voting to take it off the table.
To take it off the table. Okay. So all in favor of taking it off the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, and any abstentions?
Okay, so you never start with my topic.
Yeah, and Mike too.
Oh, that, fine. Sorry, he came in late.
Okay, so we will take it off the table and now, I guess we'll undertake a motion to?
Let me, we're just in discussions on the item now.
Yeah, so you already have the motion and the second.
Yeah, so now we can just continue discussions. If I can echo Tom's sentiments, this is a public safety issue. I can think of during this pandemic, our first responders were first and foremost out there with everything. And again, you know, Chief Moore and his board are telling us there's a need. At the same time, I recognize that as we move forward, we are putting something into place, but we all know that there's no guarantee that something would get cut from a budget. We can't guarantee that down the road. But this particular public safety issue, I think, is incredibly vital to our community. And the thought of thinking that, you know, a couple of years from now, we couldn't do something and afford to do something that would keep us from potentially having an ambulance at our disposal that could save a life. Currently, I think outweighs it for me. So I support this particular purchase.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm so confused right now. I thought that you had, we're in discussion about the first ARPA item, because I thought we were on some email.
So what, what happened was at the previous ARPA meeting, when we weren't really sure how to do things, there was a motion made to the manager by Tom. So, and then we voted to table it at the time. So now it's off the table.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we're discussing it. We haven't voted on it yet.
Okay, thank you for explaining. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the motion was to appropriate $100,000 or to approve $100,000 for the purchase of a second.
Oh, okay. So when we put it on the table, we basically put it on hold. And I said second it. I thought I was seconding something. It's okay that I seconded, but I thought I was seconding something else about an email, but, okay. I'm not discussing that. Okay. Well, I concur with what Tom did say. I think that it's a good idea. I was totally unaware of this other ambulance. And, you know, I was really into the voting for it as well because I feel that the need to have a number two is very important. But after hearing what Mike McCoo had shared tonight, I think that that's a really great and prudent suggestion. And I agreed with also what Matt had shared about, you know, I'd rather have one brand new ambulance and one that needs maintenance than two that are, you know, that's the route that I would take. So, and again, I.
But can I clarify that the motion I made is to spend $100,000 to purchase a second ambulance. The fire department currently has an ambulance that's in a cycle to be replaced. And that would still be replaced, so that we have no control over in their typical cycle. They're still asking for that completely separate from the 70,000. So if we move forward this and let's say they found an ambulance in the next 60 days, right? Then they would have two older ambulances, but the original one they have is in a cycle to be replaced and is a completely separate issue for us to take up if we so choose.
So are you saying that if the fire department decided to take Mr. McCoo's suggestion that they would have to put in a brand new ARPA request?
Because they have a request, they have an item at CIP that's been approved at CIP and is in that process. And so they would then need to make another formal request to fully fund a brand new ambulance. And that was a suggestion from the Board of Finance. But our motion is the request that they gave us, which was 100,000 for a second ambulance.
Yep, okay, thank you.
I, I feel like I'm going to have to vote no on this for now. Mainly because I'm here representing for our finance and that's the direction that, that that board went in. And I also do feel like this, I understand that, yes, like there'll be decisions made in the future about whether or not to replace it. But it, the fact of the matter is it's a new program. It'd be a different story if we were just replacing the ambulance we have. But it's not, it's just for those reasons that I, I would vote no on this particular motion. That's just me. Anyone else have anything to say? Are we ready to vote?
So the new, they do have a new ambulance that's been approved at CIP for the current year.
For July 1st.
And some of what has been shared, and there seems to be some discrepancy between parties, and I'll leave that to them, is that the information that Wellington One has been given is that it would take 18 to 24 months to get that new ambulance in.
Whereas a used one would be readily available. But what my other question is, if they buy a used one, we're not guaranteed that we're not going to have the money. I think we have now.
It's like buying any other used vehicle or any other new vehicle. You don't know, wait until you get.
Half the used public works, we hope for the best. We hope that the information you have is most accurate. Quite frankly, I can't think of something that's sadder than the ambulance currently.
Yeah, and how old is it? Four years?
2015.
But it was, it was in an accident almost right away.
It's been in one accident and it's never been the same. This week they're bringing $50,000 in that forehead. That's worked out here multiple times. One analogy I would use is public works has at least one spare plow truck. Why? Because it's a critical piece of equipment that would negatively impact one truck without. And their trucks do go down, just like any other vehicle. And the ambulance where we only have one right now, and it goes down, that just 18 times as much we've had mutually. So not only is that revenue loss, but it's also a delay in patient, we would get them ready to transport to the hospital.
All right, so are we ready to vote? All right, I'll just, I made a little tally sheet here, so. Yeah, I'll do a roll call because it'll be easy. Erica?
Aye.
Or yes? Robin? Yes. Sue? Troy?
Yes.
Me? No. Samantha?
No.
Tom Smith?
Yes, yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Mike Tomato?
Yes.
Okay, and then Donna's on vacation, so she's a, she's an absentee and Stuart Fisher is an absentee. So the motion passes, so that is approved. Okay, and then, that's it. Now, yes, I don't know. All right, so any other motions? I guess you guys can make, make a motion on any of the items. There's nothing else that was tabled.
So can I make a motion that we approve, I'll do them, I guess I'll do them separate, for $235,000 for radios for Wellington Hill Fire Department of Wellington, Fire Department Number One from Fund 19.
Discussion.
So besides the obvious benefit to having these, with the knowledge of a 9% increase coming by April 1st, I see if we were going to move it in favor of this, I see no point in meeting.
Anything else? Okay, I'll do the roll call then for ready. All right, Erica?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Samantha?
Yes.
Tom Smith?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Mike Tomato?
Yes.
And that's it, so that passes. I'm going to go for the Public Works Number Four.
I will move we approve $38,000 for radios for public works used from Fund 19.
I'll second it, Tom Smith.
All right, any discussion about that? All right, are we ready to vote? All right, Erica?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Samantha?
We're on five, ARPA five?
No, it's four. It's the radios for public works. Kind of piggybacking off the other one. It's the same vendor.
Yes.
Tom Smith?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Mike Tomato?
Yes.
Yes.
Donna is on vacation and Stuart is on vacation. Okay, all right. So that's two down. Now, I'm gonna add this up, 235 plus 38 or like 360, 373 dollars.
What do we have available for this fiscal year?
We have, we had 867. We spent 123.5, so we have 744, 27, 744, 227 left minus
So I'm gonna make the motions a little bit different. Not sure that sheet I have is most current. So I'm going to move that we approve up to $30,000 for Human Services Staff Senior Center Coordinator. To be, oh, from Fund 19.
Okay.
Just right across.
That, so right now, I'm only asking for the, although that's for three years, that is.
It couldn't be for three years, though.
It's
Well, it'd be $90,000 for three.
No, so that would be all of the money for three years, so 100% this year, 66% this year, 33% to follow. But we would only spend, like it may, that's why I say up to. So what I'd be looking to spend is just this in this, through this, through this next fiscal year.
$34,000 for one year.
Is an up to, no. It would be for all of it, but we may not utilize all of it. Christine and I have had this conversation, and this way we're earmarking the money, but only what would be spent now would be for, be used in the, up through the next fiscal year. So the remainder of this year and the entire next fiscal year. So we may never actually use the next portion. If we got through the process, because I said I would be open minded to, if there wasn't support for it fully being funded through Board of Finance and the Selectmen moving forward, then we would adjust and go from there, but then we would have had to here. So it's more earmarking it all, but actual dollars spent over the next fiscal year should be less than the $34,000. So we'd earmark the dollars that we have approved them there, but I would be open to revisit that moving forward.
As we're running totally, Christine's kind of like, spending between now and July 1, what can we spend with the whole 34 now, but it's gonna apply to the next fiscal year or the next ARPA or
If we add this, and then the, let's say we were to do all of the 300 from ARPA 14, that for this over, 744?
If we did the full 300, you'd see, it's over.
We did 100, or we just did
as long as I can get into. Then here's what we've already done. We already did 100.
Our Wi-Fi's so great.
Christina, could you just name off, name off the ones that we've done already?
Okay, so so far, I'll even go back to the, the original town meeting where those 125 was. So that was back in August. 35,000 for air conditioning units at Senior Center, 28,500 for the town office building meeting room equipment, 57,500 for the town office building basement cleaning and cement, and 2,500 for the air purifiers of town office building, which equals 123,500. So now we've, we've also approved 100,000 for the second ambulance, 253
35.
35.
35, yeah.
Yeah, 235 for the radios for the fire departments and where's four?
38.
For Public Works. So.
That's 273. And I, what's the total of what you, you said was done in August?
Yeah, 123,500.
Are the two payments even, 850K even?
Yes, it's 867.
Even split?
Yeah.
Okay, well, 1.7 divided by two is eight.
Yeah, it's a little bit more than that. It was like
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, this is, I guess, a question for Jenny, too. Would we want this to, like, say we say yes to this, could, would we want this to start immediately or wait till July 1st?
Well, I think a lot of it depends on whether or not it's going to be a new person starting the position or the current assistant that I have and just tacking on more hours and responsibilities. Um, it, for me, it would be easiest if we could start sooner rather than later because, as you know, I'm picking up the slack at this point. But, um, I mean, if we need to push it out a few months, then, I mean, until July or so, that might be manageable as well.
So we'd be located, I mean, we'd have to put out, we're talking about a new position, so we have to follow that process. So how much do you say we have right now?
I have a total spent of 396.5. Is that what you have? You said, because right now, we've just, we've just approved, appropriated, I should say, not spent, but right now, with the 100, the 235 and the 38, total 273 plus 123.5 is 396.5. And if I might take that, less that from 850, it leaves me with 453.50.
Well, I'm, I'm in, I'm in the Wi-Fi now, so.
Okay.
I have 496.5.
Well, I, I think remaining, I don't have, I was doing it from 850. As a total first amount.
At 496.5 that we've approved.
Oh, approved. 273 plus, I got 123.5. Oh, my God, now I'm So yeah, you're right, because I am doing
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's not 273, it's 373 we approved today. That's why.
So I have, that we have approved 496,500, which leaves us with 371, 227.
So then we could, we could do two, the other two projects that I thought were more time sensitive.
Just
Do we have
I'm sorry, Samantha. Yeah, I think it's
I didn't know if we had a motion on the table.
I think we do, right?
I made a motion. Did someone second it, Robin?
No.
Oh, so I made a motion to approve up to 34,000.
I'll, I'll second it if it hadn't been seconded.
So then if we did that and we weren't able to move forward on the, on the EDC, we would be done.
Right.
Also, I just, I know, I know we're talking about human services, but I just wanna
This is what, that's why I started with this amount. This was her spreadsheet. But if this was the coordinator proposed, this is the 100% proposed, I believe.
Okay.
And then she added in these as well.
What does she need, like $15 an hour?
Yes, and that's why I say up to. So this is her number, because I don't know what that would look like. So up to 34,000.
Okay.
Me, too. Especially because the other number went down, so you would think it would have gone up.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, Christina, can I just quickly speak on the motion?
Yeah.
No, I just, you know, I, I'm also sensitive to the new spending and all that kind of stuff, but Jenny and her crew do such a, have done such vital and continue to do such vital work and with the support of the Board of Selectmen and all this instead. Just, I'm definitely in favor of it.
Yeah, I, I think that this, this is a little bit different because it, it is for the COVID response. And the reason why it's there, the reason it came about and the reason why we need it for at least the next year is because of COVID. So I think it is a response to it, and
I mean, listen, if I came to with a request for, you know, additional staff member, I'll use Robin because I'm looking at her in the town clerk's office. I think it would be hard for us to justify moving that forward with our funds. I don't think that would be in our best interest. And so this particular item is exactly a result of COVID and the increased needs in our senior community. We saw how they were impacted, meaning we had to shut the senior center down. And if we had a staff member that, you know, worked for us at that point, the amount of outreach they would have been able to do. You know, Jenny certainly worked hard on that, but she spread over all of those particular people who were affected and not just COVID, but other avenues of their life prior to that. So having someone just to respond to our seniors in this, in this moving forward age, as Kathy Diver said, we are still in pandemic, is incredibly vital. So a lot of thought went into, to this before we brought it here, knowing that we'd be adding a position using funds outside of the budget.
Just a clarification on this new position. Is it limited to activities within the senior sector alone? Or is it a senior citizen coordinator that would have townwide responsibilities?
So it's a senior center coordinator? So Jenny is still our agent of the elderly? So this would really respond to the senior center. But when I think about when the senior center closed, everything there stopped, right? So we still could have coordinated some activities that could have happened in response, for instance, you know, providing meals outside of, and continuing some other things. So this person could continue to do things like that. And it gives us the opportunity to think outside the box and what we're offering to our seniors as well. So Jenny would still be the agent of the elderly, so some of those larger scale things you're thinking of would not come from this person at this point. That's not the thought process. They would be managing the senior center and the need for the senior center and the progress of the senior center.
Yes, they'd actually be expanding the services that we offer at the center.
They would be able to do some things that, you know, the previous volunteer was not even, just not even to do, there'd be some training there in Medicaid service, Medicare or Medicaid services.
Medicare. Medicaid is, yes.
Okay, so, so the motion on the table is to appropriate up to $34,000, which would be used over the next, well, it's not, yeah. So any more discussion about it, questions? All right, ready to vote? Okay.
Well, I have a discussion. It's not a discussion point, but I just want to say because I feel I have to consider what I think about going forward. I feel terrible, but I don't think this is the appropriate use either or the right way to, the right place to take it from. So I don't want anyone to take that personally, but I will be voting no. I fully support the need, but not from this fund. So I'm just saying that now because I like the voting part.
All right, Erica, yes. Robin?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Samantha?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Jenny?
Abstain.
Mike?
Yes.
And then Donna's on vacation. Stuart's on, okay. All right, so that passes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? I'm gonna make a motion, okay?
Yeah, sure.
I'll move the SCBA that we, on the SCBA purchase for 113,338.
I will second that.
Can, can you repeat that number, Tom?
Yeah, the, the figure that the chief had given us tonight, I believe, was 113,338.
Yeah, that's right.
And specifically, that, that price is good, I believe he said, to 326, if I heard it correctly.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion?
I just have a question about it, though. If we basically vote for this one, then it means that the small business proposal, there's not, there's not gonna be enough from this to do that.
Wouldn't be enough 100,000.
Yeah.
I'm with you. Said what the, that there was only a timeframe that that 113 was good for, is that why?
Well, I heard him say that, but I thought that that was the situation all, I thought that was the situation with the 235. I don't remember there being two.
I didn't know that about the other
That's also the situation. We spoke with the vendor about some other items, and he said the, especially the aircrafts, he needs corporate permission to get, give a price, and it's only good for two weeks. That's our best prices they're trying to beat for anything that we're quoting out there in the world.
So we don't know that one's going up. We just know they will only honor that price for two weeks as opposed to, we know, we, you were told specifically, go Troy, on the one hand, the fire department separate, that the price was going up 9% on April 1st for the radio, right? I, listen, there's a part of me that wants to not vote for this, right? I want to vote for it, but I also want to make sure that currently we're able to get funds into the hands of our small businesses.
And can we do, can we, can we do a partial now for the small businesses, like half or just, just a
I just, I think that all these things are important, but small businesses throughout the last year have already been suffering. And I, I mean, I sometimes feel that this has some, I don't own a small business. I volunteer on EDC. I literally do that out of wanting to help them to boost town revenue. That's the whole entire goal. And I just
I recall Chief Snyder saying that they expire on January 1st, 2023. So, and he did say it would take four to six months to get them in. So why could we maybe wait until July 1st to approve this particular item? And then that would give us the $300,000, so we could get the businesses to pay our taxes. It's just a suggestion.
Uh, Chief Christina, I'm sorry, ma'am. Can I, Chief Snyder, are you, you still there?
Yes.
That, that makes, so if we understand correctly, the price is good till 326, you said, the, the 113, it can be guaranteed. So it might, it might or might not go up after that, if we wait, right?
Yeah, I mean, like everything else, I can already assume that it's going to go up. But, you know, it did come down from the original price, in fact, when we got it for CIP. So I mean, I can't tell you which way it's gonna go. And Rob is correct that, yes, I initially put this request in for the CIP on that schedule, July 1 and for January 1. And that's imperative that it gets done by January 1.
So you don't, you don't have any heartburn if we wait a little while, other than the fact that the price isn't guaranteed, this price it begins? As long as
No, again, yeah, I don't want to see it go up. I mean, again, there's no guarantee that it will, but the only, the only concern I've had for the last three years is that we, we do something before that January 1 date, we have, I mean, in-house by then.
Well, if, if we approve it and have it specifically worded so that it comes out of the second track meeting in July, but you would still be able to tell your vendor that it's good to go and start a PO process, but just when you're on the check until July.
Yeah.
You think that would work for them? Do you, do you think that they would take a, I'm sorry, do you think they'd take a down payment to, right, so if we gave them a, like, ordered and do they just need a commitment from you to purchase, or do they need a actual dollars?
Um, I, I'm not too sure, Stuart. I don't know, maybe you can kind of help with that, or Alex?
It could be issued a PO, in this case, the talent, perhaps issued a PO as it's coming out of the Fund 19, and that would start the process. And that will lock, should lock And then we lock, should lock in the price of the order, it's now, and many of these items aren't going to come in before July 1. The radios, the coffee, even from August to October, depending on the models, and the generator, you know, who knows? Yeah, it's unlikely once they're in the locker, they come in. So many of these expenditures would fall on a bank account until after July 1.
And I, and I ask this for two reasons, one, it was a suggestion, and the second, I haven't moved forward on the 20, I think it's 28,000 for the meeting room equipment there. We've had some discussions still, I've been working with IT on what's the appropriate thing, depending on our usage. And then, um, I'm still waiting to see what will happen with potential of hybrid meetings after April 30th, and that's still on hold. And then I expect us to be, with the number Troy got saved for the last piece of the basement, I still expect us to save about $14,000 there. So, you know, I'd be willing to put on hold till after, um, July 1, the 28,000 there, and I think with the savings, we would still have enough money to, to fund both, if my math is correct.
Yeah.
Can I do that, is that a possibility? I don't know.
I don't know, I think like, once you uncover it, you, you need to be ready in case they all come asking for money that day.
Right, and I, and I'm saying I won't move on the, on the meeting room equipment, uh, if, if it needs getting, and I, I say two things. One, again, Chief Snyder, this will have my full support when we do vote, it's just a matter of prioritizing. Because we got the money in two tranches, that they didn't just hand us 1.7 million dollars in, in hold, but if we could. The 113, it's still under the 137 that was originally asked, so not that I want to see anything go up anymore, but, um, I would be okay if we did. If this was amended to be approved in the second, as soon as, as soon as the second tranche of funding was available. So we wouldn't even see July 1st, that it could be before then. But if, if the, I don't know who made the motion, would accept that friendly amendment.
Sure, that, that, that sounds fine, that, that was me.
So like, um, yeah, he said he would be okay with it, right? Because I, I'm, it's just getting really, um, like I'm doing math while we're talking, I'm looking at this, we're trying to go back and forth and look at the proposals. So these air packs are, you had talked about having good air, and obviously I wouldn't want to take away, like, oxygenated air from anyone. So the ones that you have are, are fine to use until then, it's not putting anyone in obviously dire danger, I would be discussing that, right?
Correct, until January 1.
Okay. January, okay, okay, all right.
I could certainly, I could certainly, um, reach out to the vendor and see what kind of commitment they needed for help and get back to you guys, we did it there, so.
Okay, well, I mean, for now, if, if we approved this as being, as coming out of the second tranche. We still have 337,000 left to spend before July. So that's what we're going to look at it. And I think that it's probably a good example.
And if you add the 28,000 that Erica had mentioned, it's 365.227, so I don't know if she's right.
Christina's point, so once we appropriated, we've appropriated it, and if I have to go back and all through the process again.
Yeah, I think so, it's uncovered, it's uncovered, and then there, then we'll have a process of like, trueing up at some point when we know the final amounts that were spent, and then there'll be some other funds released. So basically, we're going to have like, three, three tranches.
Christina, so can we, can we vote, that, that's fine, let's, let's vote then, after, vote on the purchase, but fund it after July 1st. The only, the only question would be on the amount, if you want to, do we want to save the amount or?
I think we have to, we have to.
Do you want to use the old figure up to, um, ki- kind of a thing?
Yeah, that's, that's probably safer, yep.
I mean, I can, I can either change my motion or somebody can.
If my friendly emotion, friendly amendment could be, that it be up to 137,000 and then it be approved once the second tranche is, um, received. I will put a date on it and keep it comes prior to.
Sounds, sounds great.
Okay, so, uh, let's vote, Erica, yes. Robin? Sue?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Samantha?
Yes.
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, and then, uh, so I'm going to put this 137,000 to be, come out of the second tranche. So at this moment, we have 337,227 left. So we can entertain a motion for EDC now?
I make a motion that we approve ARPA 14, 300,000 for the Small Business and Nonprofit Assistance Program.
A second. Okay, so Samantha, is that up to 300 or, or the full 300, just so we're clear?
Well, I've been asked to ask for the entire 300, so I guess it's, we could do it as up to, it's, yeah, we could do it as up to, and then that's what we were discussing earlier, that we weren't with 100% clarity how we were going to. Like, we, since we have to get a check each time, I guess it makes sense to fund it up to. So that sounds good to me. If you understand what I'm saying, because then we'll have to come up with the amount, which I believe, we would like to do the $10,000, but given Robin's suggestion, we will also look into a two-tier. So I make a motion, I amend my motion to request up to $300,000 of funding for ARPA 14 for the Small Business and Nonprofit Assistance Program.
I agree with that, try to reset it.
Uh, I don't think so, I do either, okay. Is there any questions or comments about this one? Any out there in Zoom? Uh, all right, we ready to vote on it? All right, Erica, yes. Robin?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Samantha? Tom?
Yes.
Penny? Yes.
Mike?
Abstain.
And, uh, okay, so that passes. So we are now at $37,227.
We, we're really only talking about the items left on the, that we heard, right?
Right, right, so we could either do the 20,000 for the band room or, um, the 69,000 for the generator. We can do those in the second tranche if we want, and, or the first tranche, but if we do it in the first tranche, well, we could only do the, the EDC.
And I, um, I'm not sure 20,000 is enough, so I, I'm okay moving on it, but I don't want to, I don't want us to agree to a number and then find out that it's going to cost 40,000 or 45,000. And then we feel like there's not enough to actually complete the project, we have to go through the process again.
So you want to table that one?
I would just, we, we're just not taking action on it.
Right, right. All right, so is that a motion to? Yeah, we're just, so. Okay, and then the generator?
Can I make a motion that we spend up to, we, we appropriate, approve up to $69,000 for the generator for Department of Public Works from Fund 19, um, in the second tranche.
I'll second it. Smith.
Any, any discussion about that one?
No power outages until after we get the next one.
All right, uh, let's, are we ready to vote on that one? I'm tired, ready? All right, Erica?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Samantha?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Superintendent Stevens, I think that we didn't take it seriously, I just want to make sure we have a, a more realistic number. Um, I'm afraid if we go too low, then we have to come back through this again, and I want us to do the whole process the right way, so.
Okay, so we don't have anything else we can act on at this point, there's no more possible action today. Um, and there, we, we do have another present to speak on the agenda, if anybody wants to say anything. Oh, Peter?
People in the craft room. I'll thank the commission for the diligence, like, that this was a progress, very worthwhile. Surely, a great response. I am, I were expressing my concern again. As the town meeting forms commission, that's what we put, for selectmen, for finance committees. That any of these projects not go through a law enforcement. Attended the mortifying as meeting the other evening, and the attorneys commentary that it wasn't illegal to proceed with this fashion. Did not give me confidence, since there was apprehension of finances as well. I'm sure when I said that evening again, I think it's important that we follow our task forces. They've served us well for a long time. They perceive the state government and the federal government to be on to town. The credibility that this commission has by doing so voluntarily, which is my urge to do, would be very helpful to the townspeople in understanding all of this. Well, you don't have to do it based on this opinion by the attorney, you could do so voluntarily. Mortifying has could act excelliously. I attended the town meeting where we approved the new lights on, on the River of Wall Field. I'm confident we can do that here. To, to have confidence in our process, who will we always do, with the challenge? I think it's important that you see that way. Thank you for listening to me.
Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Um, so a last thing to do is a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
If anyone ever says no to this, right?
All right, well, we'll see on, on fourth, where we'll be looking at a bunch of other requests.